Welcome to the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 5th. The board has been at executive session, so can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:16?
I move.
All in favor? Please stand for the pledge. All right, welcome everybody and thanks for your patience. We're a little tardy with our start tonight. My opening gratitude comment is directed to Josh and the rest of the people that have done the prep for what we're about to experience for the next few weeks. And there's a lot of work that goes into making the annual budget. We're going to get deep into it over the next several meetings. We're going to ask hard questions, but you're going to be prepared tonight. So I'm appreciating you in advance of all that. And that is the subject of the agenda for the most part, so I don't have a lot to say about what else we're going to be covering. There's not a whole lot else, so I'm just going to move us along.
Great, and I'm going to do the community update before we move into the budget presentation. And we only have a few slides because we are meeting every week this month, so the updates won't be as lengthy as they normally are. So the first thing I just want to acknowledge is that this is the annual meeting where we act on or you consider acting on our student assistance contract. And this is one of our partnerships where Carolyn D'Agostino, she's been in the high school for a number of years. We contract with an organization to provide confidential substance abuse support here at Horace Greeley High School, in addition to other counseling support that she provides. She's a confidential employee and she's a part of our team, but she also works for an outside agency with a level of expertise. So with this contract, what we have been, how we've been framing this in the past is it would be contingent on the budget moving forward and being approved by the voters. So Carolyn's contract, her annual contracts on the agenda for your consideration. And then I just wanted to share, we had our review with the Tristates Consortium. Two years ago, they came in and they provided feedback for us on our STEAM program. And so we made some adjustments based on this extensive review that was done by our partners throughout the region who come here for a three-day period and do an evaluation of our program K through 12. And we usually pick a topic for them to provide feedback on. Previously, it's been special education, and Adam in a second is going to talk about what our proposed topic will be for them to cover next year when they come. And so some of the things that we talked about in terms of planning forward would be trying to increase the flexibility for high school students to use the STEAM space because what we're finding is now that students are coming through our K8 program, when they're in their classes, they want to move in and out of that space even though they're not necessarily assigned in there, which is great. And then talking about different ways to expand our interdisciplinary work in those at the K8 level, which is directly connected, I think, to our work around determining whether or not IB makes sense for our district. And that's also could be connected to some benchmark projects that's associated with that program. And so, and then, of course, we're going to continue to move forward as we shared in our last presentation with you, trying to determine if there's a way to release some time in the Greeley schedule so students can take non-greeted courses or maybe pass fail courses based on interests that fits into their program without pulling away from courses they feel like they really would like to take in order to enhance their application process for college. And so then, Adam, can you talk a little bit about what we're thinking for our next visit?
Yeah, so we're on a three-year cycle, and we just finished up STEAM, as Dr. Ackerman shared. So our next cycle will start next year on October 22nd through 24th. For three days, a team of educators from around the region that sign up to be part of this visit will come in and focus on our K4 literacy program. And our guiding question, as it's framed right now, is to what extent do our classroom teaching practices align with the science of reading as defined by the New York State briefs and the New York State rubric? So that is the plan for next year. The nice thing about Tristates is that they put together a team of experts from the region that have a pretty deep understanding of the particular topic. So the crew that came in to review STEAM is not the same as the group that will come in and review literacy. And they'll open it up to educators from around the region that are part of the Tristates Consortium. They'll come in, they go through doc, they'll do a document review, they'll look at student work, but the most of their time they'll spend in our classrooms. So they'll be able to push in, and you'll have experts, teachers, reading teachers, classroom teachers, administrators, et cetera, some directors of literacy, I would assume, assistant superintendents from around the region. They'll spend the three days here, and then they produce a written report. We've always in the past put those written reports, we've presented them back to the board and also put them on our website. And then we go through those and we use those to help us steer our path forward.
And then this is just a highlight of the activities between now and our next meeting, which happens to be next week, but we've covered a two-week period. So you can see that we're starting to prepare for another one of our musicals. We have our transition meetings to help support movement between grade levels and buildings. And then we're going to begin our spring sports program. So we're really excited to be able to move into the spring semester, and we will be starting kindergarten registration, which is also exciting for us. And so now Josh and I are going to move into the budget presentation. And as you know from our last meeting, when we started our process, we had shared with the board that we had planned to present a budget within the tax cap. And our proposed budget is about $144 million, which is about a $3.6 million increase, which is within our tax cap. And Josh, I want to ask you to talk a little bit about this slide because sometimes it can get confusing for families.
Sure. So the budget-to-budget increase is 2.59%, about $3.6 million, but the tax levy increase is 2.31% increase, which means that other sources of revenue are making up the difference between the tax cap and the proposed budget increase, which is a flip from last year. So the, so state aid and some other funds that we've been talking about as part of our strategic plan are making up for some other, some of the other funding for the budget.
So I just want to remind the community that we start our budgeting process in the fall, and then we start to meet with our teams across the district in December and through February to get to the place where we have a proposed budget for your consideration tonight. And then you can see some key dates in March where we need to hit some regulatory requirements in terms of our property tax cap. And then when we need to have our proposed budget for your consideration for adoption, and then when we have to publicize some of our notices for our hearing. And then our budget vote is on May 20th. So between now and March 26th, we'll be presenting the community different components of our budget and the Board of Education for your consideration with the goal of presenting a budget for adoption purposes at the end of the month on the 26th. So the board has three strategic questions that serves as the foundation for the budget. The first is maintaining our excellence in our programs in a way that is also fiscally responsible. The second is ensuring that all students have an opportunity to think deeply and creatively in our spaces, that they can support their thinking, apply problem-solving skills, work collaboratively, and actively participate in their learning as they acquire knowledge. And the third is that we provide an educational program that helps our students develop skills and become ethical, empathetic, respectful, and resilient global citizens and leaders. And of course, we are, we also anchor in our strategic plan, and we have five areas that we're working on, that we shared in our previous meeting, that will be highlighted throughout the budget. But we are continuing to work to improve sense of belonging. We always are thinking about our curriculum and ways to enhance it based on where we are today. We've had a lot of conversations about our middle school and rethinking how we are supporting our middle school program. We are continually talking about how to increase our talent and our professional capacity of our staff. And then, of course, we are looking at different ways to generate revenue and improve our logistics. In this budget, of course, we're keeping students at the center of all of our decisions. We find that we are in a position where we can not only preserve but expand our programs next year, and you're going to see that as we go through our budget presentations. We are committed to maintaining our current class sizes. You know, last year that we reduced significantly our class sizes at the K6 level, so you're going to see that reflected in our presentation tonight. We are always thinking about how to maintain and improve our infrastructure, and we're mindful about the concerns of our residents. Of course, I feel that their taxes are too high, which is why we're presenting a budget within the caps and then within the cap. And then we are aligning to our strategic plan, as I previously mentioned. Now, we find in our budget, there are four major pockets that we have to support. The first is supporting financially our instructional and extracurricular programs, which is locked into a lot of our staff and making sure that we have enough staff to be sure that our class size is appropriate, making sure that our brick and mortar is maintained, and then meeting all of our contractual obligations. And we have multiple units that we have contracts with that are multi-year contracts that we need to account for in our budgeting process. All right, so now, Josh, this will be the point where we'll talk about what we already know and then some information that we're still seeking that will become available throughout the budget process.
Yeah, so at this moment, we know that our projected enrollment is going to be about the same. We're projecting a nine-student increase across the district next year. And just to note, that's a little bit of a decline at Bell School and a little bit of an increase at Seven Bridges, so we're starting to see some evening out there. Our administrators, our custodial, and our clerical are in the second year of their contract, so we have that information. ERS, which is the retirement system for our custodial and clerical, that contribution by the district is increasing by 1.3%, but the teacher's retirement system, which is our teachers and administrators, that contribution is going down by about a half of percent. And that about evens out because of the amount of money there. Our debt service is increasing by 18.28%, and that's because there's some bond interest and principal from the 2023 bond that we're going to start paying. That gets balanced out. What we've been doing is we've had this transfer to capital that we had increased to keep it, so that gets balanced out to an even amount when we decrease the amount in the transfer to capital line to do additional projects. What we also know is our health insurance premiums are only going up by 3.9%. That's the lowest it's been in a long time. The CPI will talk about the tax cap. CPI is at 2.95%, cap to 2%. Our assessment growth factor is 0.53%, and we'll talk about that number, how that came to be, a little bit later. So in the end, our tax cap is at 2.31% increase or about a 2.8% levy increase. Just as a note, we know the equalization rates for next year, and Newcastle's is going up by 4.93% and Mount Pleasant's going up by 5.31%. So both equalization rates are going up by about the same, so we shouldn't see any disparity between the two from '24, '25 to '25, '26. Some things that we don't know, we're currently in negotiations with our CCT, our state aid. I have a slide that will talk all about the state aid. We don't have the final state budget, so there's a little bit of uncertainty there. Our transportation costs, we're still working out, and that has a lot to do with fuel prices and a few other things, our special education placements, the assessed tax valuation, so the amount that, the total assessed value that we get from the towns, we'll get, start getting the preliminary numbers in about a month. And our unallocated insurance, so nicer, we're estimating about a 10% rate increase, but due to some policy limits that have been lowered and us having to make up for that, and also the premium increases are about 10%, but we're still getting those exact numbers as we go through the process there.
Okay, so I just wanted to highlight some major moves that you're going to see in the budget related to the strategic plan, in addition to other component areas of the overall budget we're going to be presenting. But in terms of safety and security, we're allocating a significant amount of money to support upgrades to our walkie-talkie system and our technology across the district. We're upgrading our phones. And at a future meeting, we're going to talk about some security recommendations for the entranceway by the Education Center for Greeley. Instructionally, we are looking to add staff to support world language at the elementary schools and the IB program at the life school. And then in terms of supporting students in connection with emotional health and related services, we are budgeting in our proposed budget to you, a TSP program at the middle school, AIS support for middle school students during the school day. And of course, we have our partnership with Northwell Health included in our budget, connected to our BOSI's line. Okay, Josh?
So again, we'll talk about the budget increase in line with the previous year's increases. We start seeing slight increases in the budget-to-budget as well as the tax levy. And you can see that this is slightly above, the averages have been about 1.9% over the past eight years, and this budget-to-budget is a little bit over that, the tax levy is over that, but well within line previous years. So we'll talk about the expenditure side of the budget first. So you can see here, the big things to note, that salaries and benefits are going up by about 3%, a little under 3%. Already talked about how the debt service increase is being offset by the capital transfer decrease. And some other things to note on here, the BOSI's increase is being offset by the technology decrease because we're transferring more services over to BOSI's so those become eatable. So that is going to show up more in the revenue line. Once we start talking about the revenues, everything else, we're seeing in-line increases or decreases. So I wanted to note here that with the 2.59% increase, salaries and benefits are 2.87%. And then every other category, we kept below CPI at 1.87%. So all of our contracts are fuel, everything that's not salaries and benefits sees a 1.89% increase. And most of the salary and benefit increase is due to contractual obligations. One of the things I want to note, last year, we saw a big benefit by a very large number of retirements, and this year, we have a very few number of retirements. So that's offsetting a lot of that, those salary and benefits increases. Again, you could sort of see here, the highlight here is that salary and benefits is making up a slightly more percent of the budget this year than it did in this current year, so that it's 71.26%. And then every other component of the budget is slightly less of a percent for the next year's budget than this year's budget. We talked about before, the debt transfer increase, the debt service increasing and the capital transfer decreasing. There is a $231,000 decrease in total to this. Part of the schedule, on the 2018 bond schedule, has a $230,000 decrease, so we're just passing that along as a savings for this school year. The capital transfer of 322, which Mario will talk about in a few weeks, is going to include paving the Greeley entrance and working on a Greeley guardhouse in the front as the front entrance to Greeley. So we've talked about the 2.31% property tax increase. We're actually expecting, mostly because of this BOSI's aid increase, about a 5.5% state aid increase. We're appropriating less fund balance to the budget this year. And then the rest are small, little things, but we're seeing a decrease. The big miscellaneous other income increase is an expectation as we work through the strategic plan of having increased continuing education amongst a few other rentals. We've actually seen more rentals of our property this year that has resulted in more income for the school district. And here, again, this is the what percent makeup each component is of our budget, highlighting again that a large portion of the Chappaqua school budget is made up of the real property So the aid, right, a lot has been talked about, the foundation aid formula, the formulas that we're having here. So I want to spend a little bit time on this slide. So the first thing to note is that the governor has proposed an 8.66% increase of our foundation aid for next year. Based on information we actually just received today, that might be $20,000 to $30,000 less when the legislature proposes it. Usually, the legislator's budget is higher, but they are using some revisions to the state aid formula as part of it. One of it is that when the governor used the inflation numbers, it was 0.3% higher than it is today, and the legislator is going to be using today's number. So my prediction is that it's all going to balance out and be a few dollars off, but there is some information that came out in the last few days that indicate that the legislature might use slightly different formula than the governor used to create it, which might show a little bit of a decrease in what we're seeing. All to look at our expense-based aid. We're estimating about $1.866 million for our BOSI's aid, about a 27% increase. As more numbers come in, I highly expect that to be higher than what we're seeing. We're expecting about $1.9 million this year, and we're moving more money over, but I just don't feel comfortable budgeting for that just yet without solid information. Also, there has been, the way the instructional material aid formulas come into play, there's going to be a continual decrease in that aid coming to our school district. So overall, when you balance all of it out, really, that BOSI's aid increase is starting to balance out some of the decreases in state aid that we're going to be seeing as a district over the next few years. Our fund balance is looking very similar to what it looked like last year, so, which is really good, right? Last year, we were able to keep ourselves at about 4% and transfer more money into our restricted reserves. I highly anticipate that that same situation will happen this year, which is really putting us in good shape to having rebuilt back our fund balance to a place our pre-COVID years' fund balance, which is important as we look to take our bond anticipation notes and convert that into a full-term bond. So going to the property tax calculation, we're looking at a levy growth calculation at 2.31%. We are seeing a 0.53% increase, which is our tax-based growth factor. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that that growth factor only happens when there is new quantity of taxable space in the district. So the construction across the street, when I was looking at all the tax rolls, majority of those have come online, which is where the majority of that tax-based growth factor comes into play for that. So this doesn't mean, once we get all the numbers, we'll know what tax increases are, but a lot of that, all of that tax-based growth factor is due to additional properties in the school district. And here's just all of the math that gets us to the tax cap, which includes all of our debt service, our capital expenditures that get added, our building aid that gets subtracted, and then to that 2.31%.
Let me see, I'll do our enrollment projections. So each year, we share out, we've had a study done on our district to articulate what our projections are into the future. So you can see that we haven't made too many adjustments, even with the increased housing market, on what our projections are in terms of guiding our planning moving forward. And I do want to remind the board that we do have, even though we're renegotiating the contract, we build the contract with some assumptions that currently exist in the current contract. And so we do have district thresholds for class sizes at each grade level, but the proposed budget class sizes are adjusted to reflect the sectioning that we used last year, which are below the thresholds in grades one through, one through five, one through four. So you can see up here how that translates to the, each building and each grade level. And then you can also review that for the middle school, and you can see through our numbers that there isn't a significant difference by grade level, depending on which school that you're enrolled in, in the district. And then Greeley, it's a little bit more complicated based on student interests and sections and what kids elect to take as more choice becomes available. But you can see what our class size projections look like at Greeley. But again, it's really dependent, it's really course-dependent. And so Josh, did you want to do the budget summary?
Sure. So the budget is $144,392,025 on the expense side, 2.59% increase over last year's budget. And again, right, this is responsive to our strategic plan, so any increases are related to that, meeting our operating standards, supporting our students, expanding our academic program, adjust our personnel based on enrollment, and maintaining a tax-cap compliant budget and keeping our classes still small between grades K through six.
So at this point, we wanted to ask the board if they had any questions or if they had any comments that they wanted us to prepare for future meetings as we go into the component sections of the budget.
Hillary, start us off, yeah?
Okay, I have, I guess, two sort of broad questions. The first is, I just want to make sure I understand, when you talked about the growth factor, and I know we talked about this last year because it was flat, and this year, it's not flat. Based on what you're saying, because obviously, we're looking at this year's budget, but also as a board, we need to be thinking, you know, past the immediate year. Is it safe to assume that this year is probably a blip because there are 100 houses sort of hitting across the street? And absent any plans for large-scale projects like that, we're going to be much closer to a flatter number moving forward? Is that...
Yeah, so I did an analysis of what has come on the tax rolls across the street, and it's about 60% of the homes there. So next year, I anticipate the other 40% will come on. But the growth factor is based on physical growth of the tax rolls in the community. So without other significant growth, it is possible that we would not see this level of growth factor in the future beyond that.
Okay, and then my other question that I don't know if you can answer, I don't know if anybody can answer frankly at this point, is obviously, there have been a lot of rumblings out there about cutting education budgets, cutting funding going to the state, and obviously, that's how a lot of funding, you know, not, not for our district to the same extent as other districts, whether fortunately or unfortunately, but we get, I think it was 9% roughly of our budget from state aid, which ultimately, a lot of that is federal money funneling down through the state. In your conversations, I know you're very tapped into everybody in sort of your role in the region. Are people concerned? Are they not concerned for next year, but concerned beyond that? I'm just kind of curious what the tenor is in terms of what's...
So the discussions have been that there's not a concern for state aid for next year, that all of those have been allocated and some received already by the state for that. We, in terms of federal funding, only receive $933,000 as part of it. So that's via our title grants, our title grants are $133,000 of that, and then our special ed grants, 611, 618, are $800,000 of it. So those we get directly from the federal government. The title grants are passed through, but it is just passed through from the state to us. So those, I'm not sure what would happen with, even though they're already allocated to us for next school year. But the discussion of the state aid component of that is that that should be fine for next school year.
In your opinion, do we need to do anything sort of prophylactically in case?
I...
I'm a little worried about this.
So the answer is, we should be building up our fund balance for that over the next years that we started doing that. And if something happens, we should be just thinking about using that and figuring out other ways to make up for that shortfall with other revenue models.
I also would share that our district is well-positioned to potentially have an issue with federal aid, because a lot of it is tied to high-needs districts. So while we don't want to be in any position where we need to reduce programming, there are, there's a lot of conversations with districts that rely heavily on federal aid and what would be the impact of that on their programs. And we're being fairly mindful of what those conversations sound like while also acknowledging that we're not in the same position as many other places because of how we're structured here.
And Josh, did you say that that information about the funding, the federal funding, will be on the website?
I can put, I could put our federal funding that runs on the website. It'll be a part of Jamie's presentation. She has slides with those numbers in them as well, but I'm happy to put those...
I think people are just concerned because, like, how much of, how much funding do we get? What's included? What is at risk? All of that. I think if we can have a central place where residents could just look that up, that would be, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure, yeah. We'll add that to the budget website.
Kaylee, did you have more things you wanted to ask, or you had the mic?
No, I'll come back.
You'll come back. Alyssa or Matt? Alyssa or Matt?
You mentioned briefly the miscellaneous other income. It's about $900,000. You said we're renting out more spaces than we usually do. Can you give us a little more info about what we're renting out and...
Sure. It's mostly athletics. So our community teams have been using our fields more and our gyms more, and the PTA has been having increased programming as well that has provided income for, for that. So our community, and it's almost, basically, we're going back to our pre-COVID use of our facilities, where we had a big dip, and we're starting to see that increase come back to our communities. And I think if you are around the school district, you see that our facilities are pretty much use all evenings, and, and a lot of that community use is funds that come to the school district to, to fund the use of that.
Great, yeah, I mean, it seems it's gone up 60%.
Yeah.
That seems like a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I know COVID, you're right, we had like basically nothing, but I didn't realize we were still ramping it up.
Yeah.
Such a big theory.
Yeah, and I also want to add, there are some, which, which I didn't, we've also received some funds from the state on prior-year expenses, that's in that number as well in there. And one thing that I did want to mention, I know a conversation has been about what the state owes us. They are down to $12,000, and we're going to see about 8,000 of it in '25, '26. And then the rest of it, we're not going to receive for 14 years, but, but, but we're down to...
$1,000 at a time.
Yeah. But it's, there's a, there's a website that shows what they owe, yeah.
And another question, I don't have the slide in front of me right now, but you were talking about the BOSI's, our new contracts with BOSI's, and using them to help us get better prices on lots of different things, including technology.
Correct.
So all those numbers are bouncing out.
Yeah, so that is more about, when we purchase services through BOSI's as a shared service, the state gives us aid back in the following school year. So we have moved our tech services, the same service we receive, we're now purchasing, it's about $1 million, through BOSI's. Our wide-area networks and our internet, same service, we're now purchasing through BOSI's, that's about $300,000 a year, will now receive between 20 and 30% of that money back the following school year as expense-based aid.
Right.
Yeah.
And Josh, do we, do you think there's more room to do more of that over time? Or are we starting to max out all those possibilities?
So here, here's what I want to say. It's a long-term, so it, it, it has involved, so to be able to do the tech services has been a seven-year project, because BOSI's has to, we, we need other school districts to do what we're, so we're looking at what our next project is.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at.
What are we targeting?
That BOSI's will create a cooperative with us to purchase those services with. And I do want to say PNW is a great partner and strategy thinker through this in what they can do within the coasters that are available.
Also, we're, there's a number of us going to meet with teams from other districts about regionalization, and how can we combine some services in some nuanced areas where we just feel like our partnership would benefit us, both structurally and financially, at the end of March? And so like, it's, it's another layer of connecting with other places, not only to save money, but to maximize offerings for kids. So that is still part, very much a part of our work here. And once we are organized in that way, Putnam Northern Westchester plans on hosting a meeting for boards of education to kind of hear your thinking around some of our thinking collectively of what might make sense in terms of shared services beyond what we already take advantage of.
Great.
And for those that aren't familiar, like, that's still all entirely voluntary.
Yes.
And like, we don't, we're not compelled to do any of that. We're doing that of our own choice. Right?
Yep.
Matt's good?
I had one question about the program and the staff member that was up on the first slide, and I think it's in the consent agenda, I think it was 5.8, but we'll get to that. But, so she's currently a faculty member of the high school now. So how, how is her position dependent on the budget?
Jamie, do you want to, do you want to talk about that?
Just pull up the resolution. So Carolyn, Carolyn has been here for many years, and it's a partnership. And so we renew the partnership each year with her. She works with our students, she's a, really works closely with, with our, with our students, with our counselors, is very much a part of that team.
So the reason we attach language to the...
Yes, wait, hold on one second. Oh, yes, so I, I recognize the importance of her position, and I actually am a big fan of hers, but I wanted to know why her specific role was contingent upon the budget passing.
Do you want me to answer that? Okay, so the reason that we've structured the resolution that, in that way, is because if the budget isn't passed by the voters and we need to make reductions, we want to have the maximum amount of flexibility within that process. So I'm not, I'm not sharing that Carolyn would be reduced, but I do think it's important to not commit to, to, to positions within the budget if we can't, if we don't, if it's, it's not known yet whether or not the budget is going to be approved by the voter. So it just gives you the flexibility to look at all contracts and doesn't commit us to any particular contracts prior to the budget being approved.
And can I just answer that more broadly? Any contract that we approve for any following school year
Right.
has language in it
Right.
that it's pending budget approval. So regardless of what that is, so...
So I'm just, I was just curious why hers was highlighted, and also because we are adding the Northern Westchester Health Services to our budget, because we see the importance of that and the value in the mental health and all of the things that come along with that. And this person specifically dedicates her job and her life to that well-being for our Greeley students here. So I'm just wondering why that position, it's like, you know, you're saying with all contracts, there's a line in there, but like, why this one? Is this the first one on deck to go? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is it just gives options to, it doesn't lock you into a contractual commitment prior to the budget being approved for the following year. So like, you would be able to reduce our staff if the budget isn't approved based on decisions that we make, and I think you should have that flexibility for all the positions that are within the district. And I don't know if it, if committing to us, this is really the only position designed in this way in the school district, now that I'm thinking about it.
So it's not...
Because she's not in a, in a unit.
Right, so like, you, you have flexibility to reduce the units. I think you should have flexibility to reduce all staff that work here, and so this gives you the ability to do that if we're in this situation. So that, that's really the reason the language is nuanced like this.
It just, it just feels a little weird to kind of highlight one particular person that is well-loved and is needed to just sort of be contingent, even though it's obviously greater. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands it's not just her, that it, it could be any other position, right?
Yeah, any other contract, right? So I think also to clarify, Carolyn works for an organization, we contract with that organization, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
One other question, I'm sorry. This is just a, because I know we've talked about it in the past, but given, I know a lot of people tune in for budget meetings who may not have heard previous conversations. Can you just, you talked about TSP. Can you just expand on what that acronym is and what the program is?
Yeah. TSP is a transitional support program. We currently have one here at the high school. And students access that program for lots of different reasons. It might be that they're coming back after a hospitalization or an illness or some reason, and they need some support transitioning back to the high school. It might be that there is some social or family situation that is causing a particular amount of stress or emotional dysregulation. It could be for, they're really just falling behind and having trouble keeping up academically. And so a referral is made by the staff to TSP, and that's housed here at Greeley with a school psychologist, a teaching assistant, and a special education teacher. And kids are really, it's very fluid. Kids are in and out as they need that program. So we are proposing to kind of make a middle school version of that next year at Bell. It'll be slightly different in that it will be, it will be connected to our multi-tiered system of support, so there will be a plan for a student once they're there, goals set, teams that make, the team will make decisions as to whether they are eligible to enter that program based on their individual situation, and whether they can exit the program if they've met certain criteria and are ready to transition successfully back to independence with the main core curriculum. So at the, at the middle school level, it will be housed with a social worker, because if you remember last year, we went to a model where we had a full-time social worker at each of our middle schools, a teaching assistant, and then the, the special ed teachers will rotate and share time in that position. And again, it'll be as needed, it's somewhat fluid, and in my presentation next week, I'll, I'll basically say the same thing again. But we're really excited about it, because there have been times in the past several years where we have had middle school students access it at the high school because it was just what they needed in order to get the support so that they could go back to their regular classes and continue successfully.
I know you'll expand this next week, but just to clarify, even though it would be housed at Bell, it would be for all middle school students?
Yes. And we also, we're looking at potentially a component of that that would support students who made a mistake and need an intervention. So we are looking at a more therapeutic approach to supporting that intervention to reduce the likelihood of the behavior reoccurring. So that's a little different nuance of this in comparison with the high school.
And just to add one more piece, we have spent a lot of work on DBT training for our social workers, psychologists, and school counselors. So what that is, is a program for in-school that supports kids with emotional dysregulation, interpersonal effectiveness, mindfulness, and stress tolerance. So there'll be a component of that woven through TSP. So kids, while they're there, are being taught strategies so they can manage those different cores, curricula, or whatever, when they leave TSP.
I think, maybe we're done? Because I would just, my questions were answered, and I just wanted to add a point of emphasis about for next week. I do think that there are community members reading the news, concerned about federal changes happening, and to just be prepared to help us allay those concerns in a little bit more detail like, like we just did here, but to keep reiterating that, because that, new people will tune in as we get further and want to hear, you know, whether they're reading about the chances of 504 being, you know, given a close look or things like that. I imagine people will be interested in understanding, well, how do we pay for that? Go from there.
Okay, great, thank you, Josh. So let me just go over the budget calendar. So at our next meeting, we're going to talk about curriculum and technology, special education, and athletics. And the following meeting after that will be the operational maintenance, non-instructional budget, revenue, tax rate, and contingency budget. And then you can see through the rest of the calendar how we're going to move through the budget adoption process. And then if you have comments about the budget, you can email the Board of Education, Josh and I. And if you have questions about the budget, Josh is the best person to contact, and he'll get back to you right away. And thank you, thank you, Josh, and your team for putting together the proposed budget for tonight, and we look forward to our colleagues' presentations for next week. And that is the end of the proposed budget presentation.
Okay, terrific. Does anybody have any committee reports tonight? Alyssa?
We have communications committee.
Yeah.
Do you want to do it?
Why don't you start?
Thanks. Okay, so we had our communications meeting on February 25th. We had a bot update where we talked about our little Greeley AI bot, sorry, Chappaqua Greeley bot we're working on, and testing him and seeing if he's ready for the people's Googling, Googling excitement. He's not ready yet, but we're still working on it, and hopefully, we're going to get it to a place where people can use the bot just to type in any questions about anything for the Chappaqua School District, you know, what day is it, what's for lunch today, you know, who's my kid's teacher? I don't know, any question you can come up with that you don't have the answer to, and it will give you a magical answer in real time, so we're working on it. And we talked about the budget newsletter and how we're going to present that to the community and make it beautiful and readable, and...
And less, and less, less information while you're...
Yes. Anything else I left out?
No, that was it.
All right.
Who else has a committee report to share?
We have a policy committee meeting this morning. We are working on two things, both of which will come to you soonish. One is, which we preview about, Dr. Ackerman had previewed, we wanted to protect the Greeley trademarks and logos and such, and so we've been working on a policy to do that. That one's pretty straightforward. Also, as everyone here knows, the community may not yet know, New York State law has changed so that we will be adding a student ex officio board member, meaning a non-voting but participating student board member, as of July 1. So we are...
This year? July 1 this year.
Coming up.
Yes.
Yeah.
This July. So we were working this morning on crafting a policy on what that looks like and how we go about that process. So I think the plan is that will be disseminated to the board for a first reading in the next couple of meetings, we're here every week. And then that will be sent out to the community for, for feedback, and also to the Greeley community, so that the potential board members start to have a feel for how this is going to go, and then we'll discuss it. There will be a discussion amongst the board that the, the public can, can be at prior to any adoption.
A work session.
We're, we're just in that process now on that, but that's, that's where we're at with policy.
So can I, can I add some logistics? So the plan is to do the first reading on both policies on the 12th, and then send out the, the student board member policy to the community in the week, and then to have a work session before the March 26 meeting at 6 o'clock, so the board can fully talk about the policy with David Shaw. And at that time, we'll have the opportunity for the community to give us feedback, and then I, we thought it was a policy that we all needed to kind of work on together with, with more time than just presenting it in the board meeting, so. Okay, thank you.
Does that do it? Okay. It's time for public comment. We welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period's been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. Are there any public comments tonight?
My name's Tim McNamara. I'm a Greeley alum, I have three children in the district. In looking at this budget, I noticed that the budget adjusted for inflation is slightly less than this current year's budget, and calculating out the budget per student, once you adjust for inflation, is also slightly lower in next year's budget compared to this year's budget. I also noticed that there's a bunch of really wonderful sounding programs that are new, proposed for next year. The security updates sound really important, the world language, the TSP program, the BOSI's partnership, the additional AIS math support for middle school students. These sound like great programs. But I really urge the board to discover how we're paying for that. Because if our budget is lower compared to last year, how are we adding these new programs? Where are we finding the savings? Are these savings that we're happy with? Or are they perhaps cuts? Because that's what we've experienced in the last few years. We've had several art positions eliminated over the last two years, elementary school art, high school art eliminated. We've had class sizes, I know we're doing our best to control them, but we've had them increase, we've had them pop up in the last few years. We've had many classes in elementary school levels above their threshold size. We don't see it in the data, but I've been told that many of the high school classes, the class size has trended to increase close to the... the class size has trended to increase close to the, the class threshold. Some teachers have told me it's becoming hard to teach effectively. The data that you get in this report is only the average per grade and also per subject. Any data scientists will tell you averages are very susceptible to outliers. At the very least, ask for a median. Ask for more detailed reports to make sure that as we add these programs with a declining budget, that we're not robbing our students of an appropriate class size or some of the other, excuse me, elements that we probably think of as part of a comprehensive education. And thank you. I know it's a ton of work that you all do, both the administration and the board. I think you all do a great job. But that is something that I ask you to, to look into. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion about public comment? This point? Okay. And we're going to go to approvals and ratifications. So, we're going to start with, let's see, what we need to do, 3.1 and 3.2, which are accepting the minutes of the two February meetings. So, can I have a motion for 3.1 and 3.2, please?
I'll move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, 3.3, and I'm going to look at Lisa and make sure I do this right. This is just a reading, and so we're not, what are we doing? Oh, we are. Oh, we're going to, sorry. We're going to wave.
We're doing the first reading and waving the second.
Yeah. Got it. So, policy 9040, this is the non-aligned administrative and confidential staff personnel policy, first reading and adoption. That's the part I missed. Thank you. Be resolved, the Board of Education waives the second reading for 9040. And then upon reading the policy as presented, the board will adopt policy 9040. So, can I have a motion to adopt 9040?
Second.
Any discussion?
Andrew, do you want to just add, talk about the position we added? Because it's in your office to this policy.
Yep. So, we have a, an assistant position in my office. It's, it's a clerical position that needs to be, we created it as a confidential position because we work on contracts and other personnel matters and all of the bargaining units. And so, it's important that that position moved into a confidential. And so, that made it not aligned. This policy then just adds that position in the personnel office to the list of different positions that are confidential. It's been agreement with the union to do this, and so we've just added it in here.
Thank you.
Any question about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Presented?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I recommend 4.2, non-instructional as presented.
I'll move 4.2. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have, because they're both on substitutes, what is, is there a number that we have in the district for both instructional, non-instructional, and custodial subs?
Andrew, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah. So, you mean, like, how many subs we have?
Yeah. Like, long-term, I mean, long-term, I guess it's based on need, and then do you have, like, building subs?
Yep. So, so we do have a small number of building substitutes at each of the school buildings, and then we have per diem substitutes as an as-needed basis who come in and are regularly scheduled. So, these are as-needed substitutes that we can call in on an as-needed basis to fill in when someone is out sick or we need some additional help.
So, you're just adding to the roster?
Yeah.
Just so that you have more on the roster?
That's exactly what we're doing. We're adding to the roster so we have more available.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to, wait, we didn't vote. Right? Sorry. Can I, all those in favor, 4.2?
Aye.
I caught it, Lisa. I didn't mess up. We now, we now move to five, which is the consent agenda. Using the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. And it's recommended that we approve the following, which is 5.1. Got to turn some pages to 5.15. Does anybody want to remove anything tonight? Okay. So then, can I have a motion for 5.1 through 5.15?
A minute.
And these include our typical CSE summaries, there's the typical notice for the election that will occur, some of the contracts that we've already talked about in this meeting. Yeah. That's about it. All those in favor? Great. Turns us to six. Six is acknowledging receipt of the following contracts approved by the superintendent per board policy 6085. So, let's do 6.1 and 6.2 together for the fantasy flash and for the consulting agreement with Christopher Osterhout. Can I have a motion for 6.1 and 6.2?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Number seven, this is a facilities. We've got a change order, so this is for 7.1. Be resolved, the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of change orders approved by the superintendent per board resolution. This change order is about a roof leak. Taking care of it. So, can I have a motion for 7.1, that we have got receipt of that?
I'll move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Nothing for financials tonight, and so we've made it to notice of future meetings. We'll be here March 12 for a work session at 6 o'clock, followed by the board meeting at 7:00. That's where we'll hear the curriculum and technology, special ed, and athletics budget presentations. And then we'll be back the following week on Tuesday, instead of our typical Wednesday, to do operations and maintenance, non-instructional, et cetera. And so, that's at 7:00. And so, can I have a motion to adjourn at 8:13?